I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Monmouth County Board of Education. It's March 11th at 5:00 PM. And please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Kara Brown will start us in there.
Huh. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job Kara, I was listening, you did remember.
She's not one to be shy, that's for sure.
Alrighty. First thing on the agenda, public hearing of the 2025-26 calendar. Superintendent?
Yeah, by code, we're required to have two public hearings prior to the presentation and passing of the 2025-2026 school calendar. And so this will serve as the first of those hearings. And if there are any members of the audience that would like to address the 2025-2026 school calendar, if you would just move to the microphone and express your thoughts.
Okay. Not seeing any, we'll move on, I guess.
Yep, and we will have, the next public hearing will be at our next regular board meeting. And then we'll have a calendar prior to May 1st for the board. We'll make a recommendation for the board to vote on that calendar. So if anybody, they'll still have one more chance to talk about it.
Okay. Next thing up is delegations. I'm gonna read the preamble to the Constitution here. Speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect of the dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by your comments. While it is not our intent to stifle public comment, speakers should be aware that if your statements violate rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, you may be held legally responsible. If you are unsure of the ramifications of what you're about to say, we urge you to consult with your legal advisor. Now, Monmouth County School Board Policy 0169. Public participation in board meetings states that you may speak no more than five minutes if there are 12 or fewer delegations. After 12 delegations, the amount of time you may speak will be determined by taking the number of delegations and dividing it by 60 minutes. Public comment is not a time for open dialogue among board members and the speaker. The board members will not answer questions posed to them from a speaker or comment on a speaker's concerns. In short, there will be no verbal interaction from the board members during or after the speaker's comments. And there's a reason for that, as far as you can wind up getting into a debate on something that shouldn't be discussed yet. So with that said, Christian Abilso is first speaker. She'll do a timer for you there.
Got the countdown for you, Christian.
Thanks, Teresa. Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for serving on the board, first of all, and giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Christian Abilso. My children are at MHS sophomore and a freshman on the cross-country and track and field teams, among many other activities. I'm here to speak on behalf of some concerned parents and supporters of the student athletes in our track and cross-country programs. Our primary focus in coming here tonight is ensuring that the hiring process for coaching positions prioritizes the health development and success of the athletes in the programs. So the issue that we want to bring up, we're concerned that the process being used to hire an assistant coach at Morgantown High School in the track and field program to oversee the distance runners may not be following appropriate procedures resulting in the potential hiring of a candidate or candidates that may not be the most qualified. So what we are aware of is that there was a single position posted back in the fall, right after the cross-country position. That position was subsequently removed. And now, and then there were two split positions posted, created to, I guess, in place of that single position. And that there's still no coach candidate approved by the board to coach the distance runners, I believe they're on the agenda this evening. You know, while we understand these are complex decisions, hiring decisions involve multiple factors, we believe that the process should be conducted in a way that ensures that the most qualified candidates are given full and fair consideration, especially in the roles, as you know, that directly impact the well-being of our student athletes. Distance running, of course, I don't have to preach about this, but like many other sports, is physically demanding, requires careful attention to training and recovery and race planning to prevent injury and optimize performance, as in many, all the other sports, a well-qualified coach is essential for managing that training, the training load, preventing injury, race and recovery planning, and the emotional support and mental preparation of the athlete. So, you know, this is not just about hiring decisions, it's about making sure our student athletes have the best possible guidance and support and have a wonderful experience like many others have that have played high school and college athletics. Proper coaching is critical to their health and long-term development and the ability to complete, compete at the highest potential here and beyond. So our request, we respectfully ask the board to, first of all, place hold on hiring any candidates for the MHS assistant track coaching positions until a review of the hiring process is conducted to ensure that all qualified candidates are being fairly considered. Obviously, secondly, prioritize athlete health, development, and success as a fundamental requirement when evaluating coaching qualifications for positions. And third, establish clear hiring criteria that ensure the best possible coaching staff is in place to support our student athletes, which is what I think we all want. So in closing, we appreciate your time and your prompt impartial attention to this matter, as track has already begun. Our goal in this is not to challenge any individual, to fame any specific individuals, anything like that, but to ensure that decisions regarding coaching hires are made with a clear, fair, and athlete-centered process. We encourage the board to take the necessary steps to review this issue and strengthen future hiring practices in the best interests of our student athletes. So thank you for your prompt attention to this. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Next up, we have Kara Brown.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Kara Brown. I have a child who is a junior at Morgantown High, 11th grade, Maddie Brown. She has run cross-country and track since 6th grade at South. So she's in her sixth year of track, she's already completed her sixth year of cross-country. And I just wanted to say that everything that Christian said, I wanted to agree with and let you know that I think that it's important to review the process. I also wanted to say that all of you, except for Mr. Smith and Ms. Morgan, will remember that I have been here once before regarding the track and cross-country issue at Morgantown High. So I just wanted to jog your memory in case you don't remember me here, but thank you very much, appreciate it, and that's it.
Thank you, Kara. Kathy Renner, is that correct?
Good evenings. My name is Kathy Renner, and I have a daughter that attends MHS. She is a senior. This is her last season. You'd think I wouldn't be here, but I'm thinking of the students coming up. I'm here to support Christian and his statement, and I hope that you guys will take everything he said into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Luann Law? Laurie, apologizing. Mrs. Christian.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Laura Abilso. I have a freshman, Tessa, and a sophomore, Max, at Morgantown High. They've been running track and cross-country since middle school. And I am also here in support of Christian's statements. We just really believe that the hiring practice needs to be looked into so that the best possible candidates are hired. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Mike Ryan. So you need to go into executive session? Yeah, we could do that, that way. Next is Clayton Ansler.
Hi, my name's Clayton Ansler. I have a daughter who is a sophomore, and she's been similar to the other families active in cross-country and track since middle school. And I'm here also to support Christian and the other parents in our concerns for the hiring process. And I just appreciate you all taking this matter up and considering it and hearing it out for what it is. We would appreciate a, we appreciate action on this review and that you would all take what you have available to you, your authorities, seriously and give it a consideration. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Rob Riley.
So does I go last, does that mean that I can use up everybody else this time?
Unfortunately, no.
Just kidding. Yeah, so as was just said, I'm Rob, I have a daughter that's a junior at Morgantown High and a son that's in 8th grade at South. My daughters ran track and cross-country since her 6th grade year at South. So I guess, having to go last, it's easy for me because I fully support everything that was just said and really, I don't think I could add anything that would be of, I can't add anything that hasn't already been said. So I'll just say that I support all of my colleagues that came up, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. I do appreciate everybody combining instead of repeating the same message, but appreciate it. Okay, we'll need to go into executive session for personnel, I guess it would be. So I need a second?
So moved.
So we'll take, I guess we'll want to go to the other room. We better. Okay, we're back, we're still in the delegation section. Previous delegation that we went into, the executive session was afforded the same five minutes as everybody else. And so we're finished because we, he was the last delegation. So we'll move on to reports, discussion, follow-up actions.
First item of business this evening are the proposed levy rates. And our treasurer, Nicole Kemper, will now address the board. You do have materials, senior, executive.
Thank you. All right, spring is in the air when we're talking about proposed levy rates. All right, county assessors are required to issue to all levy bodies certificates evaluations by March 3rd of every year. Between March 7th and March 28th, each county board is to approve proposed levy rates. Once those are approved tonight, they will then be sent to the state auditor's office and the Department of Education. At the end of tonight's meeting, it will be recessed, and then we will adjourn it, we will reconvene it, I'm sorry, to the April 15th meeting to officially enter all levies. Our total assessed valuation for fiscal year '26 is $7.3 billion. This is comprised of Class II properties of $3.2 billion, Class III properties, which are our commercial properties outside of city limits of $2.7 million, and then our Class IV properties, which are our commercial properties inside city limits of $1.3 million. As we look at the assessments from 2019 to '23, we see slight increases throughout the years. When we get to fiscal year '24 and '25, we did see an increase, and this was because of the valuation of oil and gas. What we are seeing for fiscal year '26 is a decrease of around 6.72%, and this is a decrease, a reduction of $500 million for oil and gas valuations. Our levy rates are per $100 of assessed value. We have three pools of levy rates. We have our regular levy rates that are established by the legislature, excess levy rates, which are established by the levy call, and our bond levy rates are calculated based on principal and interest for the upcoming year. Our regular levy rate for Class II properties will be .38.8 cents, Class III and IV, 77.6 cents. Excess levy, Class II, will be 33.5 cents, Class III and IV, 67 cents. With the bond levy rates, Class II, 2.58 cents, and Class III and IV, 5.16 cents. Compared to '25 to '26, our regular levy and excess levy rates will stay the same. Our debt service rates, excess levy, I'm sorry, our debt service levy rates are going to be increasing slightly for Class II by .0024 cents, and Class III and IV, .0048 cents. And again, this goes back to the decrease in our oil and gas valuations. This is the schedule of proposed levy rates. What we do here is the calculation is we take the assessed value, we times it by the levy rate, and we divide it by 100. Our projected gross tax for our current excess levy will be $44.3 million. From that, we take off of that the allowance for uncollectibles, tax discounts, tax increment financing, and our allowance for assessors valuation, which then gives us the projected net taxes to be collected of $36.4 million. We do the same calculation for our excess levy. Our projected gross tax will be $38.2 million, and then when we subtract off the allowance for uncollectibles and tax discounts, our projected net taxes will be $35.6 million. Each year, we determine if we have to roll back the rates. If the levy grew more than 104%, then the Board of Education may reduce the rates. Based on the calculation for fiscal year '26, the rollback rate is $21.63, and our proposed Class I excess levy rate is $16.75. We are well below the $21.63. We do not have to roll back the rates. This is a snapshot of our municipal bond commission letter, and this outlines our bonds outstanding as of June 30th, 2025, is $20.9 million. The principal and interest due for next year is $2,915,096. We perform the same calculations as the other levies. Projected gross taxes are $2.9 million. We take off less allowance for uncollectibles of $33,000, and that brings us to the projected net taxes to be collected of $2,915,096. And this matches the municipal bond commission letter. We do have tax increment financing. The allowance for tax increment financing is a little over $4 million. The school aid formula actually factors in the TIFs, therefore county boards of educations are made whole. And then as we compare fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '26 projected revenues, we are seeing a decrease of our regular levy of $4.4 million. But please remember that 85% of our regular levy dollars are allocated as local share, so we will be receiving more local share, which the net effect to us will be a negative $400,000. Our excess levy, however, will be decreasing $3.6 million for this current year over last year. And then the bond levy is decreasing $9,200. This will be, fiscal year '25 was the first year that we were in operation without any of the COVID money. Because of the increase in the taxes last year, we were able to continue our after-school programs. We were able to continue our summer programming, our All Kids Eat for Free, and additional staff. I will be bringing the budget to you probably in the middle of May, which will account for the tax decreases as well as any legislative changes that may come. And I believe the legislative change, the legislature ends maybe the middle of April. So, and that's all I have. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
Nicole, thank you for your presentation tonight. With the decrease in oil and gas revenue, tax revenue, do you have any projections past the '25-'26 school year? Do you expect it?
I do not at this time, but I have been working very closely with our assessor's office and the state tax department.
Okay. I find this very worrying. And I know so many students that benefit from our after-school programming, from our summer programming, from our free meals, and I think it's so important to stress that those free meals are not coming from the federal government, they are coming from your tax dollars. And these are things that all students in Mon County are benefiting from. So I think as we move forward over the next year and start thinking about our referendum next May, we really need to stress to the voters of Mon County what our school district is providing.
I agree with that.
Nicole, go ahead.
I said, well said.
I'm glad you mentioned the TIF districts, because I know, I get a lot of people that ask me about that, why are we giving that away? And I said, but we're made whole.
That is correct, yes.
And that tax increment financing. So anytime you see these, anytime you see new buildings going up, and there's a project on, over on Brockway Avenue where they're redoing that whole hillside, that'll generate more tax dollars in the county coffers, because that's going to be a pretty expensive endeavor there. So anyway, I'm glad you touched on that, because that's kind of misleading in a way, you know, when you see it in the newspaper or wherever, that's, you know, we're letting these people do things without taxes. But, so anyway, anything else? Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole. Well done.
Thank you, this is an action item?
It is.
It is an action item.
Okay.
So with that said, I guess we should have voted and then discussed, but.
Well, I can, I'll make the recommendation, and then you can move forward with your vote. But superintendent recommends that the board accept and approve the proposed levy rates as presented this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Evidently, there's no more questions, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Again, thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Great, LSIC waiver, University of.
Board members, you've had a chance to look at your executive file for the LSIC waiver at University High School. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the waiver as presented.
Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Hold on, I have a question.
I'm sorry.
So I want to clarify here, this waiver is to bring in more kind of a la carte food?
Yes.
Not the other, okay.
And we've done this for the last two years at University High School. We're required to do it annually and to solicit that waiver on an annual basis and then submit that request to the West Virginia Department of Education.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Accounts payable addendum, one of these I got to leave.
No, neither of you have to leave. The accounts payable addendum A and B are board member reimbursement for board member training. And you are not required to leave, but you do have to abstain from the vote when it comes to your name. So accounts payable addendum A will be for member Smith, so he will abstain from that vote. Superintendent recommends that the board approve accounts payable addendum A as presented.
So moved.
Any comments, discussion, questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. I'll ask Vice President Haggerty to carry the next one.
You'll just abstain from the vote.
I'll just abstain from the vote, yeah, I guess.
This is accounts payable addendum B. And again, President Kelly will abstain from this because it's his reimbursement. Superintendent recommends that the board approve accounts payable B as presented.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We're here, Paige. Thank you. Chase Monos here. Alright, a warning of contracts. Suncrest Middle School demolition project.
First up, contract is for the Suncrest Middle School demolition project. Superintendent recommends that we approve city construction for that project at a base bid of $115,402, to be exact, with a project completion projection of 45 days.
We are not tearing down the whole school.
No, just one second. Three rooms.
Three rooms. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, all? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Bus, excuse me, bus wash.
Yes, this contract is for the bus wash replacement in our transportation department. The actual bid documents are there from Mohawk Lifts in your executive content, and superintendent recommends that the board approve the bus wash replacement. I'm trying to see if I can get to the actual cost. I'm struggling to pull mine up.
I'm bringing it up here.
Thank you. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the bus wash replacement at what Vice President Haggerty said the bus was, because I can't see mine.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Tony, a second?
Second.
And Tony's here, if you have any questions about that.
Does that come with any bus drivers, Tony? By chance? Does it come with any bus drivers?
I wish.
That would be nice.
The reason it's important, tell us how many buses we have.
We have 130 buses in our fleet.
So it's to hand wash those, it's kind of.
Is that what we've been doing, hand washing?
No, right now, for the past three months, yes.
And we had something like this before, but it doesn't work?
Yes, the system we had was over 30 years old. It was at the original bus garage beside South Middle School. When we moved to the new location, they moved it over there. Obsolete, a lot of the parts that had, has been replaced over the years had to be manufactured to work. Mechanics worked yearly on it, just got to where we couldn't do no more with it. It's specific to just the buses, our bigger buses, the bus wash we're looking at, we actually will be able to wash any of the county vehicles in our fleet, school buses and maintenance vehicles and everything. It'll have an RFID system with it on the windshield. When they start to pull in, it'll read that, and it'll adjust the bus wash to that vehicle. When they start to pull in, it'll read that, and it'll adjust the bus wash to that vehicle. So...
Does it recycle the water?
That I'm not sure of.
And a lot of them, it'll go in and then it's stolen, reused, but... Okay. Any other questions?
How often do the buses get washed?
When the weather's nice, we, above 30 degrees, most of my drivers will go through there at least twice a week. Our drivers are very conscious about keeping their buses clean.
Thank you.
And then also, one of the nice things about this bus wash, they'll have a feature for washing the undercarriage of the buses. That's something we've never had before. We live in a salt belt. That's one of the areas we see a lot of issues with our buses, the frames and the undercarriage deteriorating. So that's going to help combat that for us.
How long does it take to send a bus through, the big ones?
He said with this one, it should be about every 90 seconds we can run through.
90 seconds?
It's a pretty fast system.
Wow. Pretty efficient. Okay. Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Wood lockers.
Next contract is for custom wood lockers at University High School. Superintendent recommends that the board approve Davis Athletics LLC for those lockers at a cost of $109,000.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions, comments?
Yes. What specifically are these lockers for?
They are for the locker room for wrestling. What else?
Boys' basketball, girls' basketball, and girls' volleyball.
And volleyball.
This is funded by UHS Athletics?
Correct. They raised the money.
Okay. So it's not coming out of our coffers?
It is not.
Okay.
And there was a significant difference in the quotes, too.
Yeah, it was interesting.
Is a wood locker typical? I'm just curious.
Nowadays, it is. Yeah, yeah. They're a little, they're a little more of an upgrade for locker rooms, and a lot of programs are moving in that direction. It's a little nicer locker setup.
But that's what they wanted when they were raising money?
That's what they wanted when they were raising the money, yeah.
It's recyclable. You make toothpicks out of it. Okay. Any other dumb comments?
Westover.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Next is new contracts.
And this is with Flashlight Learning. You have the agreement, the contract in your executive content. Superintendent recommends that the board approve that contract with Flashlight Learning as presented.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Down a second. Any comments, questions?
Is this like a reading, like something we've had in the past? I can't think of the name of the, like an assessment tool or a practice tool?
It's more of a practice.
Okay. And it says, speaking in writing, is it, does it give them practice with, like, writing an essay on a prompt, like the, we used to have something like that?
We did, and yeah, drawing a blank on what it was. Well, to that end, but yeah, we had a program that is obsolete now, and so this is what they found that would help with that.
Anybody else?
Yes. The student licenses are 285. Does that go to the teacher? Who are the 285?
I think that's to be identified based on the need in the classroom. So again, it varies. And tonight, I could not tell you who is designated to get those, but it's like we do with certain other programs. We don't just buy, of course, it's so expensive, we only buy for where the needs are. We have other programs like that. Obviously, we only buy for a certain number and...
It was for English learners.
Oh, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Only for those identified with the OLL.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anybody else? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Consent agenda.
Superintendent recommends that the board approve the consent agenda as presented this evening to include items A, expenditures exceeding $3,000; item B, the payment of salaries in accounts payable; item C is a cunkle consulting agreement for Mason Dixon; item D is the Navigate-360 Agreement; item E is a memorandum of understanding with Rebel Fast Pitch; item F is the Wvu First Modification of Agreement of the Purchase and Sale; item G is the minutes of your February 25th, 2025 meeting, and that is it.
I need a motion. Mark, your recommendation...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you did.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions? No poll-outs or any of that, so... Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Board member updates? Anybody have any updates?
I have none. Got to read aloud at North Elementary. That was a blast, and all the kids hugged me afterwards, and I walked out with snot and fluids all over me, so that was...
Comes from love.
It was a great day, so God bless our teachers. Also...
I think I offended by your snot.
Thank you. Spent some time at Mason Dixon Elementary. Love that place. You guys, I don't know how long ago we built that, but it's a wonderful environment. Spent some morning there reading some Dr. Seuss books, so that was fun. And then going to be at Clay Patel for a career day on Monday. Talk about careers. They must have ran out of anybody else to ask.
You took my place this year.
Great, great. So, and I think that's it for community update from Sean.
Yeah, that Mason Dixon was a lot of, well, both schools, a lot of volunteer effort and input.
I'm sure Mr. Statler was on his...
Oh, yeah. Probably still looking for the bulldozer. Okay. Anybody else?
Two updates out of the administration office. One, I want to announce this evening officially the last makeup date that we have to, we have to take. And that is going to be Thursday, April 17th. And I want to clarify a couple of things related to that. That originally is on the school calendar as an out-of-calender day, but it now will become a school day with a two-hour early dismissal for students so that Faculty Senate can take place on the 17th. So Thursday, April 17th, will be a school day for students with a two-hour early dismissal for Faculty Senate. Wednesday, the 16th, was originally scheduled as a two-hour early dismissal for students for Faculty Senate. Wednesday, the 16th, will now be a full day for students. So Wednesday, the 16th, is a full day for students. Thursday, the 17th, is a school day with a two-hour early dismissal for students. And that will all be posted first thing tomorrow, but I wanted to make that official announcement this evening. The Groundhog says we should be out of winter, and that we shouldn't have to worry about making up anymore these days, so let's keep our fingers crossed, because we don't want to dip into anything else at this point or extend our school year. So let's hope we get through the rest of the year without any need to change our schedules. But just wanted to make that announcement. The second thing I wanted to do this evening, and in consultation with President Kelly, I would like to recommend to the board that we hold a work session to discuss the 2026 excess levy. And Teresa, remind me what we talked about today. May 6th is a Tuesday. May 6th is a Tuesday, and we would do that at 5:00 PM.
Is that a public meeting?
It is a public meeting. It's open to the public. The only thing that we would put on our agenda would be a work session to discuss the excess levy. Board members, as we get closer to that date, if there are certain things that you would like to see as far as materials or questions you may have that we can prepare for in advance, get in touch with Teresa, myself, and we'll make sure that you have everything you need to have a productive work session on the 6th.
Awesome. And we generally don't have delegations at any work session.
We do not, yeah. It's just strictly the...
If they're kind of listened, but we just don't want to do any, I guess you could throw stuff at us, but... Okay. Anybody else? Board member updates? All right. All good, then.
Do we have, like, an official last day of school on our calendar?
You do.
Okay. What would it be?
May 30th.
Well, that's the last day for teachers. So I think May 29th is our last day for students.
Students.
And then, yes, for teachers, it's May 30th. That's required by code.
Excellent. Thank you.
Unless...
No.
No.
We have flights to Florida on the 31st.
I don't feel comfortable till after we get past Easter, but we're not going to have any of that. Okay. Anybody else? Policies. Go, Jennifer.
We're going to take these as a consent agenda item this evening. These are out for first reading. You've all had a chance to look at them. I'll go ahead and recommend that the board approve these policies for first reading.
Okay. entertain a motion?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
I think Jennifer's done a wonderful job of providing a synopsis of each of the changes or the rationale for the policies and the way they've been presented this evening. Certainly, as they go out for first reading and public comment, if board members should have additional questions, reach out to Jennifer, myself, and we'll discuss those with you. They have to be out for...
30 days.
30 days, and then we will bring them back to you for second reading and adoption.
And one thing I do want to point out, these were updates from Office of Management and Budget at the federal level. These were updates that were done in 2024. These are not as a result of any changes in 2025, so...
Oh, boy.
We will probably see them again.
Yeah, they do it again. I do want to commend Jennifer for, two years ago or whatever, when you suggested putting them all together, because we used to go through these one by one, and it's much more efficient and quicker this way. And they're all on the website if anybody wants to...
They will be tomorrow.
Right.
Yes.
Once you approve...
Once they approve, everybody can look, see what we're going with that. Okay. All in favor, or I guess we're done discussion, right? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries.
Probably for the addendum, because that's where the recommendation comes.
All right.
Yeah. I took it off the regular.
All right. Personnel list.
First up is our regular personnel list. There are no changes to the personnel list. With that said, Superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list as presented.
So moved. Second.
Second. Discussion? No? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Motion carries.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's what I...
Just want to make sure we're all in the same page.
Yep.
All right. For this personnel addendum...
Do you want to do new? We don't have any new positions, so we can just skip it.
All right. So we go onto the personnel list addendum. I'd like first go into executive session. I have a affirmation for personnel issues. We are back. We're in the personnel list addendum. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
I do. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list addendum as presented this evening with no changes.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion? Follow-up?
Yeah, I have discussion. The, I don't know, discussion or just comments, but the season has started. We find ourselves in a place where we have a lot of students, and we want to do what's right. Any delay in this, now you're pushing weeks and weeks and weeks to go. The kids need to get started and to continue on the way without division. And I'm sad that there's any division within any of our schools and with any of our athletics. It's upsetting.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
That's three to two. Motion carries. I guess we're going to go backwards. Oh, we got to do that?
Yeah. Do you want to make, make the announcement, then we can officially recess after the next agenda.
Right.
We can't do that until after we come out of executive session again, but I think it would be prudent to go ahead and make the announcement about the schedule, and then we can go ahead.
Why don't you go ahead and do your thing?
Okay.
Of course, the next meeting.
Yeah. So what's going to happen is that we're going to recess this meeting until April 15th at 5:00 PM here. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education will be held at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, March 25th, 2025. And we will do that officially after our next executive session.
Because we're going back into executive session for personnel issues, but after that, we will recess this one until April 15th. All right. Motion, go into executive session, discuss personnel issues.
Motion, we're so moved.